Oh, Bob, before I had on my calendar to go to like a fire restoration committee. It was on my calendar. Do anybody know what that was? And then I couldn't find it. Was anybody else supposed to go to that or have that on their calendar? All right. And so like Gladstone, I thought, oh, I must have signed up for a committee. And then there was no.
Sounds like something with the city.
Yeah, there's a link or I don't know. It was on my calendar, so I tried to go, but.
His name, his name is not showing up yet. I'm searching.
Okay.
In the search box, I'm looking for Luke to join us.
All right. And I've, I've got a message from Steve in the background.
There has to be something he's doing, logging into the right link or something.
And I, can we work on that in the background and I, and we can get this going? Is that all right?
Bob, you can't get logged in.
Right. Yeah, he'll, he, he needs, um. He's getting a photo.
What did we do last time, do you know?
Um. I think he ended up getting, um.
Did somebody send him a link? Is that what happened last time?
I think so.
I, I, I think he's not selecting the panelist for some reason. That's my guess.
So. Um, yeah, and public, thank you. We're not quite started yet. Is Luke at around?
There's Luke.
Okay, great, he's there. So, um. Let's, let's get this going and we, we know about someone trying to join and, and we're going to try to take care of that. I think on the side, all right. It's so it's six thirty four, so. Called this meeting to order. Our first item on the agenda tonight is information from the student representative, and that's Luke Roberts. Uh, but before we hear from Luke, I just want to recognize the people that have come. Uh, it looks like we have about twenty two staff joining us and about thirteen guests from the community. And we've got a couple of people ready to speak a little bit later. Uh, I want to point out to the community that we made a small change in the agenda. If you're looking at the online copy, I believe it shows public participation as item five after action items. And we're gonna flip that. So if you're looking at the agenda, uh, we'll hear from Luke. Then we'll have discussion reports. Then when we'll have public participation and then the board will hear the action items. Luke, get my screens back in order here. Thank you for coming.
Yeah, of course, glad to be here.
Can you tell us a little bit about what's happening at GHS?
Yeah, so right now we are coming to the end of the trimester. So everyone's kind of preparing for their finals. So we're all kind of doing our last minute rush, getting prepared for that. As. Are anticipating homecoming coming up, um, April twelve through sixteen. Typically that is held, um, with football season kind of at the beginning of the school year. But this year we decided that we would like to still have it, but it was too late by that point. So we thought we'd bring it back. We pushed Spirit Week back into the year and now we're even looking at making that a sort of like big end of the year blowout. Kind of right before summer. It's like a fun way to send people off. So we're pretty excited about that. Um, really getting all those details for homecoming put into place, being as that's just three weeks or maybe a month away now.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Luke, what year are you in school?
I'm a junior currently.
And what are your plans for after, uh, high school?
I'm still working to figure those out. Uh, I think that I may be interested in going to Portland State University. Um, I don't know what I'd like to study, but I know that that's an option right now. My dad works there as a, the facilities management. And so I, um, I have a discount available and it's a reason enough to definitely look into that.
And Luke, I've said, I know there's a lot of teachers on here, um, but who was one of your first and favorite teachers? I'm just asking.
Um, I feel like that may be a little bit of a loaded question. Um, I think first and favorites, I may really have been you, Tracy.
What?
I know. I'm sure you were anticipating that.
I've known Luke, he was about seven years old when he went to our school, so I had to set him up for that.
Yeah, for sure. Yeah, is there anything else?
I was just wondering if you, you hear anything about like, uh, how, how are students feeling about sports starting to open up? And, uh, the news that we're gonna physically be back.
Yeah, well, I mean, starting with sports, I think it's definitely been a huge morale boost for a lot of people. I think that there's definitely been a real lack of morale. Um, especially just kind of as the days go on. Um, I've kind of fell into the same pattern. I know so many of my peers have of just one foot in front of the other. You just show up one class to the next and there really isn't a lot of variation. So I know sports is helping. Um, that's another one of the reasons we're so excited for homecoming coming up. I, um, me and one of my peers, Jay, Jay Brown, we started this every other week video that we put out during our CCR called the Robert and Robert Show. And it's kind of a goofy thing, but, uh, we're really doing anything we can right now to bring back that morale that we're really so missing. Uh, as far as kind of perception around returning or a hybrid learning model. I think that primarily I'm seeing more questions than anything. I'm definitely seeing excitement, but, um, people are really curious, um, as am I. And so I think that that's the biggest thing. I'm interested in returning, but I think my family is still concerned about everything. And so more information right now is, um, the general thought process.
I think that's great that you took that initiative to, I think it's great you took the initiative to put those videos out and just kind of move towards people. And don't underestimate the impact that that has. So good job in trying to lead the school in that way and reporting it tonight.
Yeah, thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Luke. Enjoyed hearing about what's going on at the high school. One question I have is are those videos you're putting out going out to all grade levels? Or is that really targeted to just juniors and seniors or?
Yeah, that's being shown to all four classes of the high school.
Yeah.
Every other week on Friday.
Oh, that's great. So I just concur with Jeremy. Thank you for that leadership.
Yeah. Of course, it's been a lot of fun. We've been able to take on, um, not too many like, uh, of the issues or not issues, but topics that are going on in CCR. But, uh, more getting information out that's happening at our school, talking about sports. We've highlighted all of the clubs that are going on right now. And we've seen an uptick in participation with those. And so I know that's been really exciting for both the people participating in the club and also the general students, um, learning what other opportunities exist right now.
You know, one other thing you guys are doing is forecasting, right?
Yeah, we have that. We are kind of covering the basics, especially for the freshmen and how that works just for everyone as a refresher and what that looks like this year.
Luke, thank you so much for coming and spending time with us and telling us a little bit about how things are going at GHS. You are invited to stay, but you're also super welcome to leave.
Yeah, thank you so much. Well, I'm curious to see, uh, the conversation on hybrid learning. So I think I'll stick around at least through that.
Awesome. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Our next item on the agenda is discussion report.
There's none. Great. It was a placeholder.
Oh, okay. Next, I have, uh, this is the part that we're flipping, uh, public participation. So, um. First. Sorry, I have lost my screens again. Uh, first, we're gonna hear from Ginger. And is she in the? Is she in the room?
She is. I can see her in the attendees.
So I would like formally the Gladstone School District, Bob Stewart and Leslie Robinette, for their tremendous support of the Gladstone Ice Storm Mutual Aid Group in the weeks following last month's ice storm and power outage. Uh, City Councilor Vanessa Hartman and I created the group with the intent of using our networks to pool resources and find a way to get hot meals to our neighbors without power. My very first call was to the school district to see if we could use the GHS parking lot as a staging ground. And not only did they grant us permission, but they supported us every step of the way and used their communication avenues to get word out to the community that food, firework, and other resources would be available. Because of their support, our group was able to feed more families than we would have otherwise. At the end of two weeks, our group had served over five hundred and fifty hot meals. Five hundred of those were in the first four days alone. We distributed over two hundred bags of food and three hundred food boxes to our community. United and despite all the challenges and differences of this past year, the families and staff of our district came together to make great things happen during a very difficult time. A special thank you to the following people, Leslie Robinette, for not only communications, but also jumping in to make and serve hot meals each night. To JWE teachers Jamie Landis, Laura Vieira, and Caitlin Gillies for making hot meals and serving them. Their presence really boosted the morale of elementary aged kids who got to see their teachers. To GHS teachers Ashley and Ryan Browning for coming down to use the high school's wood fired pizza oven and serving up personal pizzas to the community. And to GHS's Mr. And Mrs. Prom, who at a moment's notice dropped everything that they were doing to load up their truck and make a forty minute drive down to GHS to deliver a big pile of firewood. I'd also like to thank the many parents of our district who provided meals, supplies, and volunteered their time and services to help the community. And a huge round of applause to a group of GHS students who volunteered to help with yard debris removal throughout Gladstone. They cleaned up forty one properties in ten days. You made a ginormous difference and we are so very proud of you. Thank you to Gladstone School District for growing great people. That's it.
Thank you. Thank you, yeah. And thank you, students, community, and all the people that worked to, to do that. And thanks again to district admin for helping put all that together. That is amazing. And I think it's why everybody is proud to live in Gladstone. So thank you.
Absolutely.
Our next speaker is Charles Henderson. And. Um. Charles, when you're ready. Um, you might be muted.
There we go. I thought he was all on your end. So I just wanted to make a, a comment about, you know, the possible reopening. Um, I realize we're all exhausted, worn out by the unusual circumstances of this last year. But we're nearing the end and I think now is not the time to disregard proven safety measures. It's been announced that there are now enough vaccines for every adult to be vaccinated by the end of May. So why risk creating a situation where we increase the spread of COVID rather than continue our current downward trend? When we're this close? To me, this would be like coming to a stoplight, putting your foot on the brake and then letting it off. Cause you know, you've slowed down and you don't see cross traffic, but you never actually came to a stop. According to a recent study at, uh, by the Princeton Environmental Institute, John Hopkins and UC Berkeley. Children, especially young children, are the key to many of the super spreader events that have occurred. And most children who are infected are commonly asymptomatic, which makes them more likely to spread. As well as we still have no idea what the long term effects on them are. To me, this is simply a risk that seems unbalanced when we compare it to waiting just a couple more weeks. Yeah, our kids are restless. Yes, we are all weary. Socialization is needed and we all want life to get back to normal. But reviewing the conditions that I last saw about how the school reopens, is that normal? I don't think so. It seems more restrictive than anything we'd normally be willing to subject our young kids to. And it doesn't minimize screen time for the people that are concerned about that, it seems. Per the last thing that I saw, it said that a lot of the social distancing measures are going to force teachers to be using Chromebooks even in the class to assist students because they can't be too close to them. And since a lot of the instruction is going to be done via Chromebook anyways, we're not affecting that much. So what positive change are we actually affecting here? Getting the kids out of our hair seems to be the only true benefit to a few people. But we are putting further strain on them, asking them to adhere to more restrictions than seem reasonable for small kids. And we're further disrupting everybody's lives, not to mention the potentially negative impact that this could have on the staff, you guys, the school, and the extra tax dollars it's going to cost for the safety measures for a school that's already underfunded sadly. And this isn't just my opinion. I've actually spoken to my kids, fully informed them of the difference between staying at home and going to school. And even though they're only first and third grade, both of them anxious to see their friends, fully believe that keeping the school closed and continuing distance learning is the correct path. They've already figured out ways to socialize with their friends that we weren't even necessarily ready for, that are not nearly as restrictive as what would be expected if schools reopened. So I cannot in good faith support reopening yet. We're this close to actually being at a point where we can get back to a more normal routine. And I don't see any benefit of risking rushing that. So far, this pandemic has only continued as long as it has because of people who sort of follow protocols or sometimes just reject them. Had we all done our best to fully do our part, I think we'd already be closer to normal. And I don't see any reason that we should continue the trend of extending the duration by rushing the process and accidentally making it worse again.
Charles, uh, thank you. And the board thanks you for your comments. Thank you. Thank you. Um, that concludes the public comment part of the meeting. So, um, action items. Uh, first item is approving minutes from the last meeting.
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
So your discussion.
You look good.
Natalie?
Thank you. Steve?
So saying I wasn't in this meeting, so.
Stacy? Yes. Eric?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Tracy? Jeremy?
Yes.
And Jay?
Yes.
Thank you.
Uh, next item on the agenda is, um, approving hybrid learning. Uh, well, this is B, the Hybrid Learning Handbook for Families. At JWE and GCCF is, uh, I believe you have that. And, um, is, is that it? That's for our review. Right? I think that, uh, that it, that in itself is not an action item. However, uh, B two, um, is the calendar revision. So, uh, Bob, can you talk to that?
Yes, yes, I can. So a few comments first and then Tammy, some people, Tammy, we need Leslie and Ryan admitted also to the meeting. The, uh. At the last board meeting, uh, the board approved a resolution, uh, instructing us and directing us to, um, come forward with a plan with this board meeting for reopening our schools, um, provided that the vaccine has been available to all of our staff. And, uh, that in fact has been history. Uh, every staff member that has, um, wanted to get the vaccine has been able to get the vaccine. The. We published some dates, um, about a week ago. For opening of the elementary school and the middle school and the high school. And the dates we published were April first, April fifth, and April eighth. That was just a couple of days before the governor's order that came out last Friday that, uh, required schools to open, uh, the week of March twenty ninth for elementary schools and the week of March ninth or April nineteenth for middle school and high schools. And, uh, so we feel like we're certainly ready for that and for that order. I'll talk a little bit more about that a little later on as far as, uh, what's happening at the state level. But for this presentation tonight, what I wanted to make sure that the board had access to was one, uh, we, we, uh, put out a survey to K through five parents. Uh, Leslie did that through her, uh, sources. And we want to make sure that, uh, we've reported to you what the results of that survey were. Uh, Ryan is on because, um, there's a lot of work that has to be done in our buildings to get our buildings ready to go. And, uh, he'll share with you where we are and our readiness for the open at the elementary school. Uh, Sarah and Mike will review what it's going to be like at the school. Uh, what's a day look like? What does the academic portion of the day look like? And, uh, they'll review that for you and then we'll get to the action item at the end of all those reports. So that'll be the sequence we go in. Uh, Leslie will be up first and Leslie, what, what can you share with us about the, uh, survey that was done in the community?
Well, we started first by surveying the elementary families. And, um, because we had a, a great deal of information to share about the, uh, schedule and the plan for hybrid learning and, um, in-person instruction, we were able to share quite a lot of details. So people were really making an informed decision. And so this served as pre-registration for that program. And, uh, what we found is that sixty nine percent of our elementary families chose hybrid instruction, uh, which includes in-person learning. Thirty one percent chose distance learning only. And twenty seven percent of the total need bus transportation for in-person learning. Um, I did kind of break it down grade level by grade level, but there were really not any great variances. It only varied by maybe one to two percent per grade level, uh, from those numbers. So that those numbers were pretty constant throughout and, um. Then we did a second survey. It was kind of a preliminary survey for, uh, planning purposes for secondary hybrid program. And in this instance, we needed to have a ballpark on how many students plan to return for in-person in orbit, in order to help us develop that model. So this is not a survey that, you know, they're not, um, pledged in stone that they will choose this program or that at this point because we haven't provided detail of the program. But we did survey, I think, seven hundred and seventy, um, students and discovered seventy five percent would choose hybrid learning with some in-person instruction. Twenty five percent chose distance learning only and twenty five percent overall need bus transportation with, um. At the middle school level, eleven percent at the, uh, high school level. So we will be doing a second survey of the secondary students once we have the plan to present to them. So they're making a true informed decision and then they can register at that time.
Leslie, I have this question for you and I, I, not to jump ahead if I am jumping ahead. But we're talking about the distance learning. Um, are we talking about just the CDL like they're doing now or doing both that they're doing now where they're doing the CDL or the, is it the PLP? Uh, my brain's not.
Both of those programs will be running.
Both, okay, thank you.
But there will be people jumping maybe from PLP into hybrid if that's their choice. Um, but I don't think we'll be adding any students to PLP at this time.
Okay, thank you.
So I know Luke was interested in, in more about the high school and what was happening at the high school. That information will be out, um, later this week. We will have detailed information that we'll be able to share. And, uh, we'll do a detailed survey, um, probably go out tomorrow or Friday. And, uh, we'll ask for a very quick turnaround from parents. Uh, again, it's for our planning purposes to try and get a jump on, uh, getting some of the work done before spring break. So, um, but this, this topic tonight is going to be focused on the elementary school and the K through five opening at the elementary school. So Ryan, uh, tell us where we are with our facilities.
Yeah, so, uh, we have done an amazing amount of work in the last couple of weeks. Uh, we continue to have food service staff that are, that are helping us do some sanitizing in the buildings. And that's allowed some other staff custodial and maintenance and a little bit of technology to, uh, really work on some significant projects to get us ready to go. Um, John Wetton, um, we will be moving furniture. Um, we moved a lot of it already. We're just going to be setting up a few desks in the classrooms, putting in some markings on the floor and, uh, doing a significant amount of stenciling outside for distancing. Uh, and that's, uh, all, all gonna happen this week still. So, um, there's a lot of people working towards, uh, making this happen. So, um. That is kind of John Wetton and, and GCCF is also, um, uh, doing the same thing. Uh, we have a little bit of furniture to move out of that space. Uh, some stenciling to put down on the floors. Um, but we're moving right along. Then, uh, Kratzburger, um, it, it continues to move forward. We have painted in the last two weeks about a hundred and twenty gallons of paint. Uh, we have all the rooms completed. Um, the drywall people are finishing up the hallways and making good progress there. So, um, it's, it's definitely a different looking building now.
Any questions, Brian?
Yeah, Ryan, what, um, what are we doing about the airflow? The, how many cubic feet of, of air we've got to move? Are we going to be able to satisfy those requirements?
Yes, so John Wetton, we've hired, uh, Air Balance Specialties to come out. Um, we have balanced all the rooms at John Wetton. Uh, we've been able to maintain over six air changes per hour in every space, but about four or five, which we will not be using. So, um, Jeremiah kind of had the plan of the classrooms. I'm not sure if that's been necessarily released, but, um, it's, it is looking very good there.
And one other question regarding that, to, to move that much air, is, is there much, um, noise or volume associated with that? I mean, is it disruptive?
Uh, not necessarily. Um, there, um, most of the spaces were very close to that already, um, based on the occupants that we would have normally had in a classroom. So, uh, realistically, most of the spaces were only noticed maybe a hundred or two hundred CFM difference compared to where they were before.
And can we talk a little bit about budget wise, just for the community, where this money, um, to install these new, uh, technology came from?
For.
For airflow system for?
Well, it, it really came down to just doing some, some maintenance. There hasn't necessarily been a lot of money involved in doing the air balancing. It's really just verifying, uh, there has been some money that's been involved in doing some repairs. Um, but yet again, that's normal maintenance stuff. It's really about verifying the flow. Uh, if anything needed to be corrected, we corrected it. Um, it wouldn't necessarily, um, it would have been a normal maintenance item. So there's been some additional UV lights and some other things that have been paid for from some of the grants available for us to do that. GCCF got a UV disinfection system installed, mostly because of the exhaust. We're pulling in 100% outside air in all these buildings and the exhaust kind of points out towards the playground. So we're disinfecting that as it leaves the return duct. So there's no potential for contamination on the playground.
Tracy, this is where the federal money and the state money that we've received has come in to be very important. So you may remember that the First Relief Act for Gladstone brought in a little over $200,000. A lot of that money was used for technology, but it's also available for this, for any kind of upgrades we need to have. The second relief money we received from the federal government is much more substantial. It's about $1.2 million. And that will pay for a lot of the upgrades that we need to make and the additional personnel we'll need to hire for opening schools. And there still will be a third stimulus plan that we don't know the details on yet. It was just approved by Congress today. And I believe Biden is slated to sign that bill this week. So that's where we are with finances on it. Those monies have come in really, really handy to not pull away from our own school district budget. Any other questions for Ryan? I just want you to know that he's been on this since all the way back in November when we first started doing air balancing and thinking about doing testing of where we were throughout the district. I can tell you that we got the jump on this and we were out in front of most school districts in the area for getting all of our engineering reports available and will be available for the community to see any of those reports that they would like to see. Okay, we're going to move on to Sarah, Michael and Lori. And I believe they're going to share some photos and some images with you to kind of walk you through what's this experience going to look like?
Yes, thank you for having us. Both Michael, Lori and myself will be speaking on a little bit about the overview of our hybrid opening plan. Natalie's going to pull up a slide presentation for us to go through. But as she's doing that, I know a lot of us have been doing a lot of reminiscing of where we were a year ago. And it was about a year to the day that I accepted this position and was able to shake the hand of some people in this room. So it's, it seems like we've, we've done a lot of new things in the last 12 months for sure. All right. Well, I just want to echo what Bob shared about both Ryan and Leslie have been just key players to all of us in this plan to bring kids back on site and have done so much in our efforts to make this happen. So what we'd like to share with you is first, our transition to the hybrid instruction. And Natalie, I'll just invite you to move the slide when we, that's perfect. Thank you. So as a reminder, for those who may not know what the hybrid model will look like in the Gladstone School District. This, hopefully, this model is a clear representation of both cohorts, cohort A and cohort B, and when they will come to school. So cohort A will come in the afternoon of Monday and Tuesday. And cohort B will come in the afternoon of Thursday and Friday. And Michael's going to speak a little bit more as to what the mornings will look like in this model. But Wednesdays, this is a day when meetings will happen because of the the planned time that's necessary for teachers. It will mostly happen throughout the day on Wednesday. But we will still maintain our morning meeting time to connect with our classroom of kids. So that is across the week what this model looks like. And again, why the benefits of this model? Most importantly, classes and children will get to remain with their teacher. We recognize the importance of that, the relationships that have been built and the continuation of of that connection with their classroom teacher, whereas other models would have caused great change in those areas. And also the opportunity for every teacher to see their classroom every day. They will be in contact with each child every day. And then finally, the model provides flexibility should we need to pivot again because of COVID-related issues that may come about in the weeks remaining in our school year. And what I would really like to prioritize in this conversation and certainly in our message to staff and families is the health and safety protocols and procedures that we are adhering to in this process. And it is without question that this presentation goes hand in hand with the handbook that has been created that hopefully you had a chance to view. That handbook very much goes into the detail, but just an overview of some of the health and safety priorities that are in place is that all children kindergarten through fifth grade in this particular conversation, along with all staff, will be in masks at all times. That our desks and our learning spaces are physically distanced. And that we will go through the disinfecting process nightly. And that when kids do bring coats and backpacks, that they will be stored in a place that's agreed upon within each building. It may vary a little bit between JWE and GCCF. That we follow the protocols for shared materials. While some materials could be shared, most will be individually stored for individual use with limited sharing as much as possible. Definitely encouraging prioritizing hand washing and hand sanitizing across the entire afternoon that kids are with us. And that we will have recess during the time when kids are at school in the afternoon. And that all touch points, as they have been, will be continually disinfected across the day. And now I'm going to turn it over to Michael, who will talk a little bit more about the schedule.
Thank you, Sarah. So for the hybrid daily schedule, and this includes a CDL-only students as well. You'll notice the mornings are similar. You also notice that we have moved the start time of the morning meeting back half an hour for both GCCF and John Wetton to allow for lunch at home and for hybrid students to get to school in the afternoon. For hybrid students, the afternoon in-person class will be working on social emotional learning and having time for outdoor recess. The academics that will be taught could be extensions from the morning, including literacy and math work, as well as possibly some writing, read alouds and other academic areas. And then you'll notice the students will dismiss at 2:30 from GCCF and 2:45 from JWE. Go to the next slide, please, Natalie. Thank you. So during CDL, with the focus on that in the morning, the mornings for all hybrid and CDL-only students will start at 8:15, like I said, at GCCF and 8:30 at JWE. And you'll notice we, that the, pardon me, that the students will go into literacy and math groups for the two hours after their morning meeting. So the morning meeting will look the same as it does now for the most part. And then the literacy and math blocks will also look somewhat similar to as they are now. There will probably be some more small group work. And there'll be more of a focus on synchronous live instruction as opposed to the asynchronous seesaw instruction that's currently happening. For those students not attending in person in the afternoon, whether they're in CDL only or it's not their day to attend, they're called to attend in the afternoon. Their work in the afternoon could be digital SEL lessons through Seesaw, read alouds on Seesaw, working on a writing prompt from the morning. They could also access specials asynchronously or finish morning assignments. And the next slide, please, Natalie. I think we'll hand it over to Lori to talk about arrival and dismissal.
Thanks, Michael. So when students arrive at school, they'll have their temperature taken right away. And you can see Sarah has dressed up our thermometer as a little leopard. And that's one of her preschoolers getting their temperature taken. And then following their temperature check, students will line up in their designated line. And I'll talk about that a little bit later with aerial view. And then teachers will come out and get the kids and take them into the classroom. And when they arrive, they'll also have, when they get their temperature taken, they'll also hand sanitize their hands. Natalie, I think we're ready for the next slide. So this is the aerial view of GCCF. And students will enter at the entrance to the field and then come, their parents will bring them over to get their temperature checked. Well, they'll enter there, their parents will drop them off, they'll get their temperature checked. And then they'll line up at the end of the field closest to the center. And then the teachers will come out and get them and bring them in. And the next slide, please, Natalie. And this is John Wetton. And so what we're going to do is we're going to close off the turnaround where where parents typically drop off and pick up in cars. And they will be dropping off in a couple of different places. So where you see A, that's where grades one and two will enter. And there'll be a tent there and they'll get their temperature checked and hand sanitized. And then Ryan and Lenny and Michael have been working on these paw print stencils. And we're going to have hundreds of them in different places. So students will know exactly where to stand. And so the first graders and the second graders that arrive by walking or their parents dropping them off, they're going to line up in the turnaround. If they have an older sibling, the sibling is welcome to be dropped off there. And then they'll just walk down to the three through five entry point. And so entry point B is on Harvard and Fairfield. And students will be dropped off there and then they will line up in that blacktop area right off of Harvard. We probably will only fit the fourth and fifth graders there and the third graders will be under the covered area. And then the bussers are going to come in both, they're going to come in from Chicago. There will be some buses lined up there and some buses lined up on Gloucester. And then there will be spots for the kids who ride the bus to line up there. And next slide, please. And so then they come to school during the day. There's a number of things that will happen. One will be, they might do some extension of some CDL work they've done earlier. They might have some new learning, some inquiry, some writing, maybe some number corner in math. And then they will have a recess. And our teachers are working really hard to get the kids that are only in CDL. They're trying to have their experience be as close to what the kids would get to school as they can, providing some of the same learning opportunities for the kids to do independently at home. Okay, I think that's it for that one. And then when they're dismissed, when, if they are walking or they're picked up by a family, the families will come to the drop-off point and the kids will leave from there. Again, third through fifth graders that have an older, younger sibling, the older kids will walk down to the turnaround area and just stand in the same spot as their younger sibling. So parents only have to pick up in one spot. At GCCF, the teachers are going to walk the kids that are walking or being picked up. And then other staff members will walk kids to the buses. And at John Wetton, teachers will walk the first and second graders to the buses. And then the other first and second grader, first and second graders will be picked up by another staff member and taken out to the front. But third, fourth and fifth grade teachers will be able to walk their kids to the buses and then over to the dismissal area for that group as well. And hand sanitizer will be used as the students exit the building. That's it for that one. And one thing I just wanted to make sure you all knew is that this would have been really tough had we not made such good hires last year. Working with Michael and Sarah has been wonderful and I think we've really made a great team. So I'm really grateful that we hired who we did for those two positions. And I think that's it.
So one question for the three of you. Would one of you take a minute and explain what is in the handbook and what parents can expect when they see the handbook that will be available?
Yes, the handbook is a fairly comprehensive overview of safety measures that we have in place, what the day will look like for students for in-person learning, as well as some guidance around mask wearing and some other details with regards to usage of bathrooms, water and some other important pieces that kids will experience throughout the afternoon on their time here at John Wetton. There was also some of the standard CDL, or pardon me, some of the COVID guidance in there as well and other information about requiring masks for all staff and students being over the nose. And then also mentioning our extra care room where we will be for those students who potentially are potentially displaying COVID symptoms that they will go to. We will also be having a separate kind of typical health room. And that's for, you know, injuries and things that might require a Band-Aid. But for anything that could be a potential COVID symptom, the students will be going to an extra care room that we will have in the building. And I'll also talk a little bit about the staffing that we'll have around those extra care rooms.
So board members, what questions do you have?
I'll jump in and have a couple of questions. One is, great job. You know, the handbook looks amazing. The work you've done so far and preparing and planning. It's just, it's really stellar. So thank you for that. Just a couple of things, small things, I think, just questions. I saw on your slide, Michael, you didn't say it, but that it looked like that CDL kids have the option of coming to John Wetton for recess in the afternoon?
No, no, it's, there are students, if you've chosen hybrid, you're obviously coming in the afternoon in the cohort A or B. And then some families have chosen not to come to school and they're CDL only.
Right. I think it was on that CDL slide, it said recess at John Wetton. So if you're sharing that with families, you might want to, either I read that wrong, but I think it was when you were talking about CDL.
That CDL slide was highlighting the morning, the afternoon was looking at the hybrid. I'm sorry for that confusion.
Okay. And then the next one is I wondered about COVID testing and you don't, I don't think I saw anything in the handbook about the COVID antigen testing. I'm assuming, I think that you guys are doing, offering that. And you'll have to get permission from parents as well as, how will you be communicating that?
I'm going to, I'm going to move that question to Tammy. She's done the most research on the testing.
Thanks, Bob. So yeah, I believe there is a page in the handbook, Stacy, that speaks to that. I think it was newly added, but I I do believe it's in there. But yes, we will be offering the antigen test. Staff who are going to, you know, be the observer, it's a self-administered test, first of all. But we will have people there, you know, with students, certainly when they need to do that. It will be performed in the extra care room. So anytime a student is referred to that room or comes to that room because they're not feeling well and have COVID symptoms, a test will be administered. Parents will be notified of the results and then they will also be told whatever kind of supports that they might need or what next steps are. The test is not for students who are in staff that are not in the building. So if you're in CDL learning and your student's not feeling good, it's not used for a screening tool. It is only used for students or staff who actually are exhibiting COVID symptoms. And yes, you do have to have parent consent. So yes, sorry, caught that last piece. So yeah, the schools will be sending out, there's actually a PDF billable form that comes with the training kit that they'll be sending to parents prior to students arriving so that we have all that information on hand. So that we'll know which parents So that we'll know which parents have consented to have their child tested.
Hey, just to piggyback that, there is extensive information about it on page 15 of the book. But what happens if they do not provide the consent form? Do we have any kind of follow-up mechanism where there's an expectation for them to get an external test and provide it to us?
And if they're exhibiting symptoms, we work with our nurse, right, or our health assistant. If a parent has said, no, my child is not going to get tested, then we would follow the RSSL guidance, which directs us if there is a symptomatic student or staff member, they would, you know, move over to a quarantine status until they were symptom free. So we would follow our RSSL guidance in public health if somebody did not want to be tested.
Thanks Eric, in my scrolling, I missed that. There it is.
There's a lot in there, there's a lot of good information in the handbook.
Yeah, it is very detailed, it's a bit overwhelming. I wish it said at the very front page, this is to meet the government's requirements. That we didn't just come up with this. Okay, a couple of quick questions, now I'll jump in. Did we coordinate with the city at all or the police department about the elementary, the, around the elementary school with the traffic? For potential, you know, issues there?
I'm not seeing a hand go up, so I'm gonna say that we have not yet, Eric. But through our school resource officer, we always engage him in helping us plan out whatever our plans are.
Great. And, and same applies, I think for the, there's always walkers or joggers on that track. I'm just concerned you probably want to make sure we have someone there enforcing no, no traffic during those hours.
That's correct.
I, I heard you say tents at, at John Wetten for those areas. Is that the thinking at JWE or at GCCF as well because of standing out on the track for spring rain?
We thought of a couple of things, tents are one. We've also ordered umbrellas for families to use should they need one upon entry to the field. And I also just would like to take this opportunity to publicly acknowledge Ryan Lee, a senior at the high school, who has been a gift to Michael, Lori and myself in helping us film what this will look like for families. So we, I have a completed video I'm able to share with families that's narrated about these processes. And JWE is not far behind, but it's, it's been incredible to work with a, our, one of our own who's incredibly talented and he's been, he's been amazing.
Okay, my daughter made me promise to ask this question. Do we have a plan around if people can't hear you, the teacher, because the mask on or they can't hear the student? Are we just telling them to speak up louder or is there some kind of microphone implement? You know, is there any thought around that?
We'll do what we need to do, Eric. If we need to get microphones, there are, there are some microphones at the elementary school. And we'll, but we will do what we need to do.
I think the other thing that might make a difference that may not be realized is how fewer kids will be in that space. So it will be interesting to see if that is a, is a help and an assist in of itself.
What are your cohort size looking right now? So when you, we think about the 70% divided into two days, what is that looking like per cohort?
We're averaging about 10 per cohort.
And at John Wetten, in the primary grades, we're averaging about eight or so pro cohort and intermediate grades, around 10 or 11 on average.
And it was mentioned that we wouldn't necessarily add people to distance learning at this point, but people may choose to go to hybrid. How, how firm are we on that? Because I know, you know, previously when this first started, there was some issues about, you know, make sure, ensuring those numbers stay firm because of logistical reasons. What if there is a child that like just can't handle having a mask on for the couple hours that they're in there and they need to pivot to distance learning? You know, do we have a plan for, for going back and forth if necessary?
We will do that, Eric. I, I just tell you that, you know, we don't have the specific plan of what the mechanism will be, but we always try to meet a child where their needs are.
When I guess the reverse question of that would be, you know, the parents who are opting to do CDL and don't want to do the hybrid and then their, their child sees their friends in the hybrid and they're like, wait a minute, you know, I've changed my mind. I now I want to do the hybrid, but the cohorts already has their 10 or whatever, you know, group number within that, you know, that, that spread area in the, in the classroom. There's a question there somewhere.
Yeah, I'll, I'll take that one. We're anticipating that will happen, Tracy. And we think that we will have some students and families that try one thing and then then want to try something different. And I don't believe that will be really large scale. But we'll accommodate as we can accommodate. So it is something we've, we've talked about and discussed.
I know you guys have talked about a lot of things. Quick question about recess and not trying to be a germaphobe, but you know, after, you know, quarantining for the last year when I'm looking at, I think it's on page 14, recess equipment, balls, hula hoops, jump ropes and things being sanitized, which is amazing. And the same thing, you know, can't bring your personal stuff. How are we feeling about, I mean, the fact that you have to stay six feet away from people right now because of, of germs? And now we've got kids passing the ball back and forth. Have we gotten to the point where we're that? We're being that tight about that? Do we have a feel from the, the families, from the teachers, from the community, how we feel about that? You know, because kids have been told stay away, stay away, stay away. And then now we've got balls and jump ropes and hula hoops and things. So I guess. There's a question there too. It was an eight Zoom day for me today. So the questions are there, I'm just having somebody finish my, finish my sentence for me.
Well, I, I don't know that I can speak specifically to the balls and hula hoops and, and jump ropes and such. But in terms of playground equipment, right now, our preschool students are participating, those who are choosing to participate in a learning outside option, which allows preschoolers to be on our back playground following all the protocols and procedures, we wrote a learning outside operational blueprint. And I can say that they are doing an amazing job of, of, at four, being able to understand, even though it is difficult to be distanced and to still play alongside your peers. So I know that we're gonna, you know, run into questions along the way. And there is specific guidance around playground and being in the outdoors that we will follow. So, and then of course disinfecting those tools that are being used on the playground, we will, we will do that as well.
And then we're also working to provide games and activities that don't necessarily involve equipment at times. And then also encouraging and requiring hand washing and sanitization before they enter the building coming in from the, from the playground.
Thank you.
My question is, is regarding when the kids line up for their temperature check. There is an adult there to, to screen along with them? Or are they just looking for a little green light and then they, they, they move forward? And if somebody's temperature does check high, what's the procedure at that point?
Yes, the little screening iPad type does, you just, you, you literally put your face in front of it. It tells you your temperature, it also tells you if you have a mask on or not as well. And, and so if a, if there is a student with temperature above 100, then we will, we will ask that they, that they go home. If, if the parent has, has left the student, dropped off the student and they're in line and they display a temperature of over 100, then we will be immediately calling home and asking, we'll be escorting them to the extra care room and then calling home and having them go home. And following those COVID procedures for quarantining potentially.
And there will be an adult at each of our temperature check stations helping the kids with that.
I, I'd like to ask a follow-up to that because I know part of the screening also is a visual screening. And it, like, the, the temperature check is one thing, but then there's kiddos who don't have a temperature but still show symptoms. I'm assuming that adult would also be doing visual screening.
Correct, yes, and we'll be providing trainings for staff prior to reopening around that, yes.
And how's our subpool? Concerning all this, because I know we talked about it, we had talked about it at a previous meeting, like if a teacher need to go to care room, that administration pops in, but, but how's our, how's our stub pool for covering, coverage?
Tammy, can you answer that or do you know?
I, I can a little bit, I mean, we're, we're still in discussions, right, with our, with our GTA, what that will look like. But yes, we are working on subs that we're recruiting as well as internally staff that are not necessarily assigned to a cohort of kids and having them be available in those situations as well. So we are working with GTA and principals on a plan.
Bob, I have a question around the governor's mandate, should I hold off on that or would now be appropriate?
Now is fine, Eric.
So just, can you clarify a little? So with the governor's new mandate that schools open and setting an earlier date than us, you didn't go into too much detail around that. Has, I, I know you had to do some follow-up with, with the governor's office about what all that means and the ramifications of that with our dates being slightly later. Can you speak a little to that? And then has there been any, to, to the concern about we shouldn't open at all? Is, has there been any discussion of what would be the consequence of defying the governor's order?
Well, I'll answer the first one first, I don't want to find out. Because my, my hunch is it involves money and it probably involves a lot of money. So I, I don't think we even want to, want to consider that as an option for us. The, we don't officially know what, how the, how the Department of Ed is going to handle school districts that have already published opening dates that are a little bit different than what the governor's mandate said. We expect to get that guidance sometime next week. As to what kind of a waiver process there would be. There, there are several school districts that have planned, and examples, one school district has planned that all their training activities will occur during the week of March 29th and they plan to open on April 5th. Other school districts are even a few days behind that as far as opening dates. And so there's, there's a wide variance of what that will look like around the area. And I think that the, the intent is to get kids into school. And my hunch is that they're gonna, they're gonna come through with some workarounds for districts that are really putting together the, the effort to get our kids into school.
In, in the dates we have in the agenda, K through one, April 1st, two through three, April 5th, does not take any account the learning days for the teachers prior to that. I'm assuming that those learning dates would be school is in session, right? That would, that would work with the governor's mandate?
That's, that is part of what you're approving tonight. It's a change in the calendar to add two training days for a K through five staff that will occur on March 18th and March 19th. So there'd be no school on March 18th and 19th. March 29th, the first day after spring break, was already scheduled as a grading day for staff. So there was no school on that Monday. And the next day was a planning day for staff. And so all those will be incorporated together to provide the, the adequate time for preparation and training that needs to occur. The training is mandatory, that is part of our reopening that has to be done. And so we need to make sure we provide the time to do that. And then we actually get back into swing of school on the 31st, which is a, a CDL day for all kids. And then the next day is the startup for K1.
But back to what you said, Eric. Those teacher workdays don't act, don't count as student days. So if the governor holds to you have to, we have to start on the 29th, then we would have to change this calendar. It couldn't be teacher workdays, but because the way she said it, the week of, that we're hoping, and like Bob said, I think that there's a little bit of flexibility there, but we haven't gotten the final word yet. But no, I think what you asked is, since they're days, they're, they're teacher workdays, so they don't count. The governor could come back, it's possible, I think, to say, no, students will come on the 29th.
Yeah, I, I do not expect that, Stacy, I don't think.
Right, I don't, I don't think so either, but I'm just saying.
Yeah, the language is pretty clear that the week, it says the week of the 29th. So that means any day that week.
For those that waited to open, that's the only concern though, is the April 5th, April 8th, if we have to start.
That's correct.
Then wouldn't need that.
Yeah, and we're going to assume that all that's going to be okay, until we know that it's not. And then we may have to make a pivot at that point.
Thank you both.
Are we ready to consider 4B2? Which is approving the provision to the calendar? All right, I'll take a motion.
I'll motion to approve.
I'll second the motion.
Been moved and seconded and we did have some discussion. Do we have more about our vote?
Mine is more of a question, will we need to hold a board meeting next week? If the governor comes back and says that all grades have to start the week of the 29th and we need to adjust that, will we then hold another board meeting to make, to take that action? Or can the district have the authority to take that action?
If that occurs, then, then Stacy, I would get with you and Greg and we decide what the next step is, what we need to do. I'm not sure what date we're going to get the guidance. And originally they told us we would receive the guidance on March 19th, which is the Friday before spring break, which is terrible timing for schools to be able to, need to do any work that goes forward from there. And I know the, in people at Oregon Department of Education and I know they understand the pressures the schools are under to get this done. And they have said that they're going to do their best to get the guidance out by Monday. And so I believe they will attempt to do that. You know, the first thing that has to happen is the, the official executive order has to be given by the governor. All that, all that's happened so far is that a letter has been given to Pat Allen, the director of the Oregon Health Authority, and to Colt Gill, the deputy superintendent of public education, with instructions within that letter of what should happen going for, going forward. The executive order is still being written. And we, we hopefully that will be out before the end of the week. Because that is really the starting point for all the other things that need to happen.
You know, Stacy, we would not need to meet because the resolution states that although we, on the second to the last paragraph, that we are approving the targeted dates for hybrid learning as presented in the, in the superintendent's report, the final paragraph states we are giving the superintendent authorization to flex the targeted dates as needed to mitigate in within the state guidelines, so.
Thank you.
Yep.
I think this, one last thing too, for parents who are listening, that, that, that even though, you know, the governor came out with saying, we will go back. Parents still have, and it was said earlier, but you know, you still have the opportunity to do CDL with your child until the end of the year and then we'll go forward. So that is, I know I've had a lot of parents, not a lot, but I have had, you know, some friends ask me. And that is, that is still an option for parents to, to continue the course, you know, that, that you've been on for this year.
Any further discussion? All right, thank you Natalie.
Stacy?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Tracy?
Yes.
Jeremy?
Yes.
Jay?
Yes.
And Steve?
Yes.
Thank you.
Motion passes. And now, people in the audience, we have a, a series of action items that are kind of annual. Kind of annual business. So. Board, it looks like the next item on our agenda is approved request for resignation and release of contract.
A motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion. Natalie, thank you.
Greg?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Tracy?
Yes.
Jeremy?
Yes.
Jay?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Stacy?
Yes.
Thank you.
Motion passes. Next item is approve a request for unpaid leave of absence.
A motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and seconded. Any discussion? Natalie, please.
Eric?
Yes.
Tracy?
Yes, sorry.
Jeremy?
Yes.
Jay?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Stacy?
Yes.
And Greg?
Yes.
Thank you.
Motion approved. Next item acknowledged termination of contracts for temporary licensed employees.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and approved. Any discussion?
I want to let you know that the next several items are all mandatory by state law. That you execute every year and it has to be done. I believe the date is by March 15th of every year you have to. Taken these actions. So this is while it may seem to the audience to be moving along pretty fast, there's really not a lot of debate on most of these.
Thank you. And sorry, I don't remember where we were. Did we have a motion and a second? All right. Natalie, thanks.
Jeremy?
Yes.
Jay?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Stacy?
Yes.
Great. Eric?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Tracy?
Sorry. There are no names associated with this, correct? Because having a family member in it, I'm looking through the minutes right now.
Further down.
Further down. I don't think. Think I'm okay. If my brother's name isn't on there, then yes. Otherwise I'll abstain, but I don't think it's on there. I'm scrolling as fast as I can.
Is the vote complete on that one, Natalie?
Yes, it is. Tracy, you're looking for contract teachers.
Yes, I think I'm good. So I'll just say yes.
After probationaries, he'll be a contract teacher.
So then we'd be on like page 24, 25.
So are we are on then to item F? Is that correct? And I'm sorry, Tracy, you did vote or are we waiting?
I did vote. I said.
Okay, so thank you. I'm sorry, motion carries.
I was scrolling quickly. I thought I looked it up earlier and. I apologize for holding things up.
Better to do it right. Thank you. Next item is approved contracts for probationary licensed employees.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Or discussion? Natalie, thank you.
Jay?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Stacy?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Tracy?
Yes.
Jeremy?
Yes.
Thank you.
Motion carries. The next item approve initial to your contracts. For teacher contracts.
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
Moved and seconded discussion. Natalie, thank you.
Stacy?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Tracy?
Yes.
Jeremy?
Yes.
Jay?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Thank you.
Motion carries. Thank you. Next item is extend contract teacher contracts.
Motion to approve.
I'll second.
Items motioned and seconded discussion. Natalie, thank you.
Eric?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Tracy?
Yes.
Jeremy?
Yes.
Jay?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
And Stacy?
Yes.
Thank you.
Motion carries. Our next item is extend probationary administrator contracts.
A motion to approve.
I'll second.
I would like to super second that. Discussion. I guess I just discussed. I'm sorry. Natalie, please.
Greg?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Tracy?
Yes.
Jeremy?
Yes.
Jay?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
And Stacy?
Yes.
Thank you.
Motion carries. Next item is approve three-year administrator contracts for non-provationary.
Motion to approve.
Second.
It's moved and seconded discussion. Natalie, please.
Eric?
Yes.
Tracy?
Yes.
Jeremy?
Yes.
Jay?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Stacy?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Thank you.
Motion is approved. Our next item on the agenda is approve the second reading and adoption of board policy section KL.
Move to approve.
Second.
Thank you. That is motioned and seconded. Natalie?
Thank you.
I I'm assuming any any questions that were lingering about policy. This is a good one to pause on. Okay, thank you so much, Natalie, for giving me.
Yeah, yes.
Thank you. Steve?
Yes.
Stacy?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Tracy?
Yes.
Jeremy?
Yes.
Right, KL is approved. Our next item on the agenda is to approve a change to the 2122 budget committee members. Vanessa Hartman's been added.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve that.
Second.
Great. We've got movement and seconded. Any discussion? And Natalie, thank you.
Steve?
Yes.
Stacy?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Tracy?
Yes.
Jeremy?
Yes.
Jay?
Yes.
Thank you.
Board members, if I'm reading correctly, I think that concludes our action items. And next up on our agenda is the superintendent's report. What's that? I'm sorry. I saw you talking, Bob. Were you telling me that I'm muted?
I was just saying we're going to bring Rachel in.
Oh, okay.
She'll cover the financial report. Sorry.
Good evening. For a moment, I thought I lost the entire meeting, but it was moving me between places. I panicked for just a moment. All right, so I'm gonna share a screen here. I'll try this guy. There we go. I think you can see the financial report cover page. Is that correct, Natalie? Yeah, okay.
Yep.
Good evening, Chair Lynn, members of the board. You have before you the some information on this period ending February 28th, 2021. Terms of financial data for the Gladstone School District. I do have some additional pages tonight as we continue to work through and implement. Use of our software system. I I like to rely on that a little bit more heavily, but. So some of these are similar schedules, but I have some additions that I'll cover with the with the board. Our first is the. Summary schedule for the general fund for the month ending February 28th. We have $1.4 million in revenues, $1.8 million in expenditures. So in that period activity, we do the reduction in terms of our overspend compared to revenues of 382,000 and change. That's typical for February. It's actually more typical that we would have a larger spend down. However, February continues to be a month where we have. A higher amount of grant expenditures as a result of the funding that came in to cover our COVID needs. As well as reduced expenditures for labor in some areas due to furloughs. Fiscal year to date, we've collected $19.2 million in revenues. And expended $10.2 million at this point. The projections I'll cover a little more depth. In for future pages, but overall continuing to project an in-fund balance of just over $3 million. This represents a spend down in cash, meaning we've we will expend more than what we collected in the current year. By just under $100,000. This is one of the new items for you. This is a system generated report from our accounting software. You'll see this as backup to the schedule that I provided earlier. This page is demonstrates the general fund activity by major function. This is how the board adopts the budget. So you'll see the revenue show up in the same way, whether we look at it by function or by object. Function breaks out with instruction, support services, community services, so forth. Our overall budget of 22, $24.2 million. Again, similar information, just a different look and using the system report. This also has a column for encumbrances, which shows you what we've encumbered for labor. And any purchase orders in the system that remain unpaid to date from each of these major function areas. It also demonstrates our budget balance and how we're tracking. Over the course of the year thus far, a negative number on a revenue budget is. Is is basically demonstrating a grid that we're doing better. So a negative number in a revenue means we've collected more than what we budgeted. Whereas a negative number on an expenditure would imply that we are set to overspend and we need to do some changes to our budget. The next schedule is the same numbers. It's just broken out by a major object area in the general fund. This is where you can see we've broken apart salaries, payroll, expenses, purchase services, materials and supplies and so forth. You'll see here the contingency line item. We never spend out of a contingency line item. Rather, if if there is a need to access that, those dollars, a resolution will be taken to the board. With a request to to move funding between contingency or out of contingency into another appropriation line item for expenditure. So this number will always be zero and whatever's left in that budget will add to our ending fund balance. This next schedule is one that you've seen. You saw last month as well. This is comparing. Expenditure revenues and expenditures by major function year over year. Again, same information on fiscal year 2021, but providing some context and what we were looking at, looking like. Last year during the same fiscal period. So again, we've over expended by 382,000. Last year we were at 760,000 again. As I mentioned earlier, we would typically be higher, but due to furloughs and expenditures being covered by grants, we're able to do a little bit better than that. Another look at the same information, just over $3 million in any fund balances and any fund balance and then the spend down here. So you can see that we have. Essentially are. Doing better, obviously in a much better position than we were in the prior year. Now the comparison year to date by major object. So for July through February of 1920 fiscal year. Compared to July through February of the current fiscal year. We've we've collected $191,000 less, oops, than we did last year. And then we've expended $1.6 million less, which is also proving our our financial position. This is atypical. I'll say that every month until we get on to the next year, but this is not typical that we would under expend. By that that level in a regular school year. So this leads me to the schedule, the updated schedule for projections for the general fund. This you'll see here are actual expenditures, July through February 2021. Same information. This one is broken out by by category of the object as opposed to the function. Just because I feel like the data means a little bit more in terms of how our projections look. I did add a couple of notes just to remind that the May is month of May is the last time that the district will collect state school fund revenues. For this fiscal year, we collect double in July and then we don't get any from them typically in June. The May adjustment is anticipated to be a negative adjustment with the final 2019, 20. Reconciliation happening. We've had some declining enrollment, so we over collected and they'll come back and get it this year. And then for the expenditures, again, as pointed out last last month. Our 10-month payroll, 10-month employee payroll happens in June and it is representing June, July, August. Salary payments and that was earned in this fiscal year. So it all posts to June, which is why those numbers are higher. So this projected numbers are again showing up here in this green column. Those have been adjusted from the prior month. A couple of items to note. Additional federal revenue. We were recently approved where certified for an indirect rate, which gives the Gladstone the ability to. Collect an administrative fee on all of the grants that are coming into the district. To help offset the cost of administering those programs within the general fund. So that's a different number from this prior year or for the prior month. Additionally, with news that we were about to go into reopen reopening and bringing people back from furlough status. I've adjusted the expenditures on a monthly basis leading out to the rest of the year, which. Ate up some of that additional revenue that we were that I was projecting with the federal dollars coming into the district. So. These numbers do represent all staff back at work and working a full schedule the remainder of the of the fiscal year. Lastly, the ODE estimate that's been used for these revenue totals for state school fund is based on the March 2nd update. So that'll be the last update that we get this year. And then we will, that's how I'm able to project out the state school fund revenues for March and April, the adjustment in May. And then we won't see another and we won't see more information around this year's collections until next year around this time. Before I go on any questions on the general fund before we wanted to grant and other funds?
I have a question, Rachel, and so you'll have to help me remember. So when you were talking about enrollment, declining enrollment and then having to adjust for that. Is that taking into account the current enrollment right now? Or does our current enrollment right now affect us more for our budget, our next year's budget?
So the answer to both questions is yes. So the May adjustment that happens as a result of the reconciliation for 2019, 20. Is based on declining enrollment from the prior. is based on declining enrollment from the prior year, or better yet, better stated, it's actuals. So once all of the state numbers have settled, all of the districts have reported they've released any reserve funds within the state school fund, there's a final reconciliation of the prior year. If they, if that number, the formula has changed and it impacts our totals based on the number of ADNW that we've we finally we adjusted to for the prior year, then that that adjustment will come to us financially as a reduction in our May payment. A number of things could contribute to that, increase or decrease in statewide property tax collections, overall enrollment, as well as whether or not we were in a prior period look back, that home harmless position that we've been in apparently for the last three years or so, perhaps more. So some of those, all of those things, as they, for lack of a more technical term, wiggle, when all those numbers are put into the formula, the end result is redistributed across the state. If we were overpaid last year, then they will come back and get the difference this year. The other part of your question in terms of enrollment for this year and how that impacts us, that that's found here within the March and April and May payments. We collected more than $1.2 million per month, the earlier part of the year, and with second quarter ADM and then the final numbers for 1920 being in place, as a district in declining enrollment, our payments are based on the final 1920 enrollment numbers, not on our current enrollment. And so as that adjusts, that also impacts this year's revenues and that's reflected in these projections moving forward. So the hope is that we get a, we're a little bit tighter in that estimate moving into next year. And as I work on the state state school fund revenue for projections for the next budget year, I'll try to anticipate what next year's May surprise will look like. So it doesn't come as a little bit of a cliff when those numbers come out.
Yeah, I mean, I was wondering too, like if we are going to be in this hold harmless because of COVID, the declining numbers and the reaction and likely when schools fully reopen, those numbers will go. I know we were declining before, but we've declined more because of COVID and numbers will likely go back up. So thank you for explaining that.
Sure. Any other questions on the general fund before I move into grants? All right. So the grant fund, I added a couple of notes. And this is a little bit more of expanded information than I shared with you last month. Being able to break apart the working budget, you'll notice here is working as opposed to adopted. Each grant that we're working through with the grant program managers were establishing the budget based on the award and the the source of those resources. And what I'm showing is a need potentially to come back and do a budget resolution with the board to reallocate the the funds in terms of state versus federal and those expenditures. The reason being that we've had significantly more federal funds coming through, as you might imagine with the CARES Act and SRR 1, 2, and soon to be 3. So we're monitoring all of those and don't be afraid by the parentheses, we're going to continue to work through that. And if and ultimately the end result is something that requires budget authority from the board, I'll report that to to Superintendent Stewart, and we'll come back to the board and ask for adjustments to the grant fund budget. But so far, for the month of February, we collected 163,000. We've expended 123,000. This represents over collecting in some of the grants that require us to draw down at a percentage basis versus others where we expend the money and then we draw down the revenues as a reimbursement to the state. So those won't always tie out until we get to the very end of the year. Then our revenues will completely tie out to our expenditures in the grant fund. Two more system reports by a major function in the grant fund, as I mentioned before, and then by a major object in the grant fund. Again, I I prefer to use system reports to verify that our schedules with projections are really tied to something finite and available, a keystroke within our software program. And then lastly, the additional funds or the remaining funds, food service, summer food service, we're tracking that very closely, identifying our revenues versus expenditures at this time during COVID and different way that we're providing food services to our families. And the differences in how we are able to collect the resources that that help offset those costs. Food service is a standalone fund and it needs to be self-sufficient. We do have the benefit of having some eligibility for some of that CARES Act money to help offset. So we're keeping an eye on that one moving forward. Same thing with the revenues for the community school. The rest of these are associated student body funds, which continue to be monitored by the local sites, followed up by our pers and self-insurance, debt service, capital projects, and then trust and agency funds. All right. Any other questions for me?
Thank you, Rachel. Well done.
Thank you, Rachel.
Thank you very much.
Super comprehensive. Thanks.
Personnel matters, the next thing. And Tyler Hoffman, day custodian at John Wetton, has turned in his resignation. He's leaving us. So we'll be in the process of rehiring for that position. You school board policies, and this is typically a place where Jeremiah would maybe pitch in a little bit, but I don't really have anything to add to this. Tammy, did you have something you wanted to say?
No.
Yeah, this is our first reading on this group. So if there was questions, then I would just ask to defer first reading to next month or get questions to Natalie or Jeremiah. Just because I I'm not, you know, up to speed on what the changes are.
Right. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is legislative updates. Let me give you a few things that that we've learned recently regarding their legislature and where it's headed. We expect the co-chairs to issue their budget later this month. And what we're hearing is that budget is likely to be about 9.3 billion, which is about 200 million more than what the governor's budget was, but it's about 300 million less than what school districts believe is the continuing service level for education. It's my guess is it's unlikely it will move from that number. I think 9.3 is probably what we need to budget on and probably need to anticipate. I think the legislature looks at it that there's quite a bit of money coming in from the federal government through the different relief stimulus plans and that that is makes up more than the amount that they are they're underfunding schools. So we will learn more about the latest SRR grant. So this is what we call SRR 3. So this is the third stimulus package from the federal government. What we do know is that it's $125 billion, which is a substantial amount of money. And the the estimate yesterday was that about a billion dollars would be allocated to schools to try and give you some kind of relationship of what that equals. A billion dollars is roughly the amount that the student investment account was to generate over two years. And so that's, if you think about the amount of money that we were projecting from the student investment account and because it will all come at once, it would be doubled. That's that's roughly the amount of money that I'm that I'm anticipating it will be. So it should be enough money that we could really look at and not have to worry about our current budget being impacted by any kind of COVID responses that we need to make. We're still waiting on graduation guidance. We think there'll be guidance in two areas. One is any modifications to any credit requirements by students for diplomas. And the state is still working on that and we expect that we'll have some information in the next three or four weeks. The second part of that is graduation ceremonies. And what we're capable of doing with a graduation ceremony in terms of an audience. And unfortunately, I know many of our community members would like to know that information right away. We don't know that information and we won't know it. It'll be after spring break before we find out more. I would, my anticipation is that it will look similar to what we're doing with athletics as it relates to the risk factor and being able to congregate on a on a field. And so that's what I think it will look like. The other thing that just came out two days ago is that our state legislature is providing about $250 million for summer programs and other programs related to lost learning of students. And again, we don't have enough detail to be able to tell you specifically what that means. But I do believe that it will represent a fairly significant amount of money that will be available to Gladstone for operating summer programs. They could be enrichment, they could be academic learning, they could be recreational. The the purpose is to first of all, recapture lost learning, but secondly, provide for the social emotional health of our kids and to reconnect kids to school and to other kids. So we'll learn more and while I'll report more as we as we know more, but right now that's about all I do know about this particular fund. Questions?
I know some of this information, but something our board and our community might be interested in. And Bob, if you'd update us on state testing, since we know that the federal government has said we need to state test, I think we're still waiting to hear what Oregon has to say. Is that right?
That's right. Then, and that's as of yesterday, that the guidance we received from the state is they're still working on it. And we don't have an answer as to what will happen in Oregon yet. It's hard for me to imagine that in some way we're going to try to do state testing when we haven't been in school all year. I just can't picture that that's the best plan. Any other questions? Okay, I think there was a joint meeting with city council. So we've worked, as you know, we've worked on finding a date that works for both the city council and the school board. That's in the first week of June. And we will host that that meeting hopefully by the first week in June. We'll have the ability to meet in person for that meeting. And so that's where that's where we're counting on. And if it needs to change, then it will. And I'll work with the city administrator Jackie Betts on developing an agenda. I know the city has some things, specific things they would like to discuss around some financial needs the city has. And I think that our school board should should have a similar discussion about what our long-term interests are around finance, too. And that concludes the report. Great.
Thank you, Bob. Everyone else. All right. That brings us to presentations and suggestions from board members. And if you don't mind, I would just use my screen again. So first, the first board member, I've got Stacy, Jeremy, Steve, Tracy, Eric, and Jay.
I don't have anything this time. I'm good. Thank you.
And I'll take it. And I just want to say I'm excited to see some of the steps moving forward, seeing some of the competitions going on, school moving forward in some new ways. I think it's healthy for us. And so I'm excited about it and appreciate all of the work that it takes to do this. Lots and lots of people been involved in the process. And so appreciate Bob and your team working hard to loop people in and and keep things going. So thank you.
Steve, you're the next victim.
Thanks for putting it that way. I I just want to, first of all, thank Bob and the initiative group. Definitely all the work you guys did in keeping this the weekly or sometimes daily updates. I greatly appreciate that so that we can make an informed decision. Then on a personal note, guys, I just want to surgery went well. And I appreciate all the guys' well wishes and everything like that. I'll be stuck in the brace for another six weeks and then physical therapy will start. So but again, thank you guys for all your well wishes and and cares and concerns. Thank you.
My, I already forgot those. Is it? A couple of things. There were one, I just, you know, the things that Luke said about what the kids are trying to do, I think is amazing. You know, we're we're coming out of that, you know, fires, COVID ice storm, you know, trifecta perfect storm. So it's great to see the kids excited. It's great to see them getting out on the fields. I know, you know, my own daughter came in today and said, you know, I'm playing softball. I was like, all right. I mean, like, she's on the other side of the house. I don't know what she's doing. So it's great to see the kids all doing that. Also, if you haven't seen the Gladstone High School drama production, Josh and Emmett are hilarious. They came out. There was an email with a link to it. It's super funny. And then finally, congratulations on to all the Gladstone teachers who, from what I read, 20% of the teachers nominated for teacher of the year were from our little district of Gladstone, which just says so much about the amazing work that our teachers are doing through all this. I mean, 20%, you know, our district were nominated for teacher of the year through, you know, parents and coworkers and things. And it's just, it's just amazing. It's just great, a great place to be. That's that's my say.
I think it's my turn now. So I just want to say I'm happy to see a plan. It obviously took on a little more urgency with with what the governor has put out now as far as that goes. But I think what's interesting and, you know, you see the plan and then you see the handbook published, but there's still a lot of stuff happening behind the scenes, a lot of unanswered questions, literally staffing questions and whatnot. So this is, this will go probably literally right up to the very day students come back, right? That there'll be people working on this. So though we see this plan come forth, and I think the community deserved that plan, my opinion was it was overdue. And so I'm so happy to see it, but I think it's also worth noting that this is just the beginning of something, really, not the end of something. So there's so much more work that will happen and so many questions unanswered still, even even with regards to that plan. So I know that this district's on it, but I think it's an important first step is to get this out there and let people see what it looks like. I was happy to hear about the video. I think I heard something about those being made too. But I was happy to hear about the videos because I think that is a very telling feature for people to see what it might actually literally look like, right? Pictures are one thing, but a video, I think is pretty cool. So thank you to the hard work that goes into that. That's it's a really big deal. That's all.
Yeah, I'll jump in. So just a couple of special callouts, the classified staff for all their hard work. We all received a great email from Joe this week regarding the classified staff and never want to stop remembering the sacrifice that they're making in the especially almost double the work that they've been going through through all of this. To Ryan, not only dealing with transition to hybrid and in-person learning, but on top of that, dealing with the extensive repairs that had to be done at Cracks Burger, massive amount of work, you know, so just I didn't get an opportunity when he was on, but wanted to call that out. And then had the opportunity to run into Lenny this week, who really shared with me the work that the our food service workers have been doing over and above their job with extensive cleaning and that they've been doing it in a very positive manner, just willing to jump right in, do something completely different than basically what they were hired for and doing it willingly and doing it well. And that just speaks to the to the typical our staff at this district, whether it's the teachers, the administration, everybody is all hands in, very positive, very giving. We don't probably recognize that enough. So just wanted to take a moment to do so. And and then finally, what the presentation tonight, like what Jay said, yeah, we all felt it was overdue and but it shows how much work has gone into it. I think there's one thing this district has proven is that we can fail fast and recover and move move forward quickly. And we will do that. There's obviously when we throw kids into school with masks on, there's going to be things that are not going to work or that are going to be missteps. And I'm absolutely certain we're going to recover quickly and move forward as we've been doing. I think we adapt better than any other district around. And that's why I think we, I don't know, Bob, if you want to share, but we, you know, we know that we've had other districts coming and asking what our hybrid approach is going to be. And so that tells you, you know, that's very important. So that's my two cents. Thanks.
Actually, let me follow up on that a little bit. And I just say, yeah, I would like to give a shout out to the teaching staff and the administrative staff and everyone thus far that's The teaching staff and the administrative staff and everyone thus far that's been involved with bargaining classified will be coming up. But I think the reason that other districts are looking at what they accomplished is. They've worked, not just we're all working hard, right? But like, how do you, how do you work while you're there and what do you put into it while you're there? And I've been so impressed at how dedicated they are to the students that they teach and care for, but also how that affects the community and. It it has taken, I I realize everyone's impatient, but I I think that includes every everyone in the room during the bargaining session. I think we've really, I I shouldn't say we, I'm lucky I get to be there and witness, right? These people coming up with the solution that I think is that the best thing that we can provide for Gladstone and that. Other people want what we have and they're borrowing from us. So I'm just, I'm very proud and grateful to everyone involved. I believe that is the end of our. Our our time for our comments. I I want to remind us that there's a special district election coming up on May eighteenth. And the last day, I think to register is is it March eighteenth? I'll I'll follow up with you. But I think that's correct. At this. In a bit here, we are going to go into executive session under O R S one nine two point six six zero. So this meeting is adjourned. And. So my procedural question now is.